Good evening. Welcome to the June 2nd regularly scheduled meeting of the Upper Darby School Board of Directors. The first item on our work session is the Pledge of Allegiance by our new students, school board representatives for the upcoming school year. Ume, Sidiqua, and Curtis Everett, along with our current representatives, Lamia Mims and Karen Shazadi. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We would like to extend a warm welcome to Ume and Curtis as our new student, student, uh, student, school board representatives. The student delegate to the school board is a prestigious position that students apply for by submitting an essay that explains why they would be the best representative for the high school. The students who are chosen are student leaders who contribute valuable information to the school board regarding their high school and community experience by attending monthly school board meetings. It is with great honor that I announce that the 2020, 2021 student delegates to the Upper Darby School Board. Congratulations to Ume, Sidiqua, and Curtis Everett. We look forward to working with you and welcome, welcome you to the team. Our outgoing students, school board representatives, Lamia Mims and Karen Shazadi would like to give their monthly report and to share some words of wisdom with their new reps at this time.
It is my honor to welcome these young and talented kids, and I'm so proud of them. I wish all the luck and I know you guys will do awesome. I can already see it by just working with you guys for one day. I know you both will have a bright future and will publish all your goals. I wish you all the best and remember we will be here for your support.
I would also like to welcome our new board reps. I'm incredibly so proud of them. I know they're gonna be amazing. My only words of wisdom to you are there's nothing you can't do, especially with this team and family that you have by your side. Me and Karen have experienced it. You can speak your heart and they will help you do it. And this is such a great opportunity to be, to be a part of your school and your community. And to start off our monthly report, we just wanna say that this month we decided to not do a report at all. We want to thank everyone in this district. We want to start off by thanking our teachers and the staff who work in this district to ensure every child feels welcome when they step into any one of our schools. We want to thank the counselors who work with us to solve our issues, who are, who are just there when we need to talk to someone. We want to thank the lunch ladies and the gentlemen who prepare our food, who smile at us and greet us, making our day a little bit happier. We want to thank our janitors who keep our school clean. We want to thank everyone in this district who puts in all the effort that they can to make sure that we are getting the best education that we can. We want to thank the board for being with us and allowing us to speak this entire year. Without this opportunity, Karen and I would not have felt how much of a voice we had in this district and in our community. Truly, we feel that there is nothing that we, like, you can lose from the Upper Darby School District, but only gain, you gain memories, you gain friendships, you gain lasting friends, relationships and friendships with your teachers and the staff. And these memories the kids cherish as they walk forward in their life. And that's exactly what me and Karen will do. We, we will cherish these memories as we move forward, hoping to continue to make the Upper Darby School District proud of us.
Thank you, Lamia and Karen. It was, it was an honor having you as part of our team. Uh, you handled your job with, with such grace and dignity and class, and, uh, we always look forward to your reports. I know you have bright futures, but we're expecting big things from you. Good luck in your future endeavors and thank you so much for all your hard work. Okay. I think they have one more piece?
Yes. Uh, with the help of the new student representatives, we have created something to address the matters going on in not just our community, but nationwide. The community we live in is hurting right now. Hurt by the injustice in the country. Hurt from the loss of innocent lives due to the violence and racism. Hurt from the loss of property. Hurt from being locked in the house due to COVID-19. We are hurting for those in our communities who are judged by the color of their skin. We are hurting for the children who live in fear and are not able to freely be who they are and to access all that our amazing country has to offer. We, the student body, sympathize with our community, and it's upsetting to see our community at rest, unrest. The recent events in our country have not just sparked a feeling that was brought one by, one act by injustice, but it has revealed the hurt, pain, and anger that we, as persons of color, carry with us each and every day. What we now see is a buildup of the social injustice people experience every day. The cry for, for change and the treatment of African Americans and persons of color in general in our country is loud and clear. Change is important, and the change we all want to see will only happen if we come together and work towards our goal of ensuring equality for all people. Our position has given us a voice, a voice that represents our peers. And we would love to see it to help those in our community in any way we can. As a community, we cannot fall apart, but rather we must work together towards change. We need change across America, the sort of change that gets to the heart of who we as, we are as a nation. We believe in America. We believe in the people who make up this nation, all of them. We believe we can and will make the changes that we all need so desperately want to see. As peo-, as young people who have a voice in our community, and we realize we all need to heal. We want to help our families and neighbors heal. We need to come together for the generation after us and for the future of this country we love so much. Thank you once again for allowing us to bring you our very last report as seniors at Upper Darby High School.
Thank you very much, ladies, for that poignant message. It's a very important message.
Thank you. It's been an honor.
Thank you very much. Uh, towards that regard, I just wanna piggyback on the important message, uh, that you just imparted. And I'd just like to do, uh, if I could, do a moment of silence for George Floyd's family, for our community, and for our nation. We all need healing. That's the key word here. We all need healing. Um, I'd like to just do a quick moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Buford, was there a me-, was there a comment? Ms. Mitchell, you have a comment?
Yes, thank you, um, President Brown. I just wanted to, um, usually at this time of year, we, um, really have the opportunity to sort of really honor Karen and Lamia, our student board reps, and we're so sorry that we're not in person and that you're not getting this proper send-off. I just wanted to say that I am so incredibly proud of both of you. Both of you have used your voices to fight injustice this year, and I know that you'll continue to do that as you leave us. Um, Karen, you especially have really, Karen's joined us on many advocacy calls. Um, she spoke at our advocacy event that we had earlier in the year, and I just, I just wanna encourage you all, please come back and visit us when we're allowed to be in person. I wanna hear about what you're doing and how you're using your voice. So, um, congratulations, ladies. You both are amazing, um, and I'm gonna miss you terribly.
Thank you so much. We both miss you, like, miss the entire board so much, and we can't wait to come back and tell you all our stories from universities and just make everyone here proud.
We, we can't wait.
Thank you again, ladies. During this unprecedented time, while schools are closed and social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District needs to continue certain aspects of its business, which includes decisions concerning pandemic planning. For this reason, the Upper Darby School District will continue regularly scheduled school board meetings while Governor Wolf's emergency declaration is in place. It is the plan of the school board to hold these meetings with the minimum required departures from normal operating procedures. The Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures document, outlines expected departures from the, those normal operating procedures and the policy justification for such departures. At the start of each board meeting, held during the emergency declaration, the board will review the departures from normal operating procedures as well as their justifications. While schools are closed and social distancing requirements are in place, the Upper Darby School District finds it necessary to hold virtual school board and school board committee meetings to complete required business. These virtual meetings will allow for public viewing and participation. Following practices already in place for regular meetings, all virtual school board meetings, in addition to allowing near real-time public viewing and participation, will be recorded and the recording is made available after the meeting. In order to hold virtual school board meetings, adjustments need to be made following existing board policy. These adjustments have been outlined in the Upper Darby School District School Board COVID-19 Special Operating Procedures. Dr. McGary, I think you have some additional information?
Yes, Board President Brown, thank you very much. As is the case during this pandemic, we made every effort to maintain each feature of our regular meetings as we planned our transition to a virtual meeting. Tonight, as you've already heard, our school board, our reps to the school board have already provided their report. There will be a work session, uh, as well this evening, celebrating our top 5% as we normally do each June. Our school board representatives have done an amazing job and will recognize our new school board representatives again during my superintendent's report. We will also recognize our students, as we do each month, who have demonstrated excellence. If you would like to participate during our meeting this evening, you could do so by following the two procedures. First, you can send an email to committeequestions@upperdarbysd.org. Again, you can send an email to committeequestions@upperdarbysd.org. Please make sure to provide your name, address, and the report you would like to comment on. If you have, you wanted to provide a general comment this evening, you must have done so by sending an email to the general comments to committeequestions@upperdarbysd.org by 7:30 this evening. You can also phone in your committee, uh, your comments this evening at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Again, please leave your name, address, and the report or comment you would like to leave, and the board will certainly read that and make it a part of the record. We've also made sure that a link to the district's official YouTube channel has been made available and shared in our board meeting advertisement and a subsequent parent line communication across district Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter and social media accounts, and posted to the district website. Opportunities for public comment will be provided at the conclusion of each board report respectively, and at the conclusion of the board meeting. The board will consider public comments respective to each board report prior to the board taking action on a board report. For example, if the public would like to comment on the personnel report, the comment must come in before the conclusion of the personnel report and before the board takes action. If someone from the public would like to comment on the curriculum instruction report, the comment must come in prior to the board taking action on that report. They are just two examples of the several reports the board takes action on. General comments, as I said, must have been received prior to 7:30. All comments can be sent to committeequestions@upperdarbysd.org or by calling in at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Just be sure to leave your name, your address, and the report, or if it's a general comment, so that we can make sure we take it into our report and, and read those comments this evening. There is also a seven to 10 second delay during the live stream, and the board will provide a wait time following each report in order to assure that all comments are received. Board President Brown, uh, if you're okay with it, I'd like to interrupt at certain points throughout the evening and remind those who are joining us of their ability to participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. Please do that. The second item on the work session agenda is the honoring of the top 5% of our class. We welcome Upper Darby High School Principal Kelly Simone, who is joining us by the way of a previously recorded video to lead us in the top 5% ceremony.
Good evening. Tonight, I am proud to present the top 5% of the graduating class of 2020. Esther Akande attended Bywood Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took four AP courses, participated in concert choir, indoor and outdoor track and field, student government, dance team, basketball squad, National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, recognized for being the National Honor Society Public Relations Officer, has a special talent of playing the viola, alto saxophone, singing, and making jokes, and would like to be a neuroscientist. Raywan Ahmed attended Crest Haven Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, participated in French Club, Female Empowerment Club, Service Club, Anti-Bullying Club, Ecker Connects, DECA, recognized for distinguished honor roll, honor roll, Royal Scholar Award, and the Student of the Month. Likes studying Arabic, learning to dance, listening to music, watching TV shows and documentaries, is bilingual, and wants to pursue a career in pediatric medicine. Tarana Anana attended Charles Kelly Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took six AP courses, participated in tennis, computer science team, National Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Reading Olympics, Reading Club, Upper Darby High School Teams Engineering, awarded Athletic Achievement Award, Captain Award, Overall Excellence in the Study of English, Excellence in the Study of Discourse, Science Certificate Award, Spanish III Honor Certificate Award, Distinguished Honors, has a special talent of translating Bangla, drawing Henna, and intricately braiding hair, and would like to be a data scientist for a tech business company or an accountant in the Government Accountability Office. Tasneya Anana attended Walter M. Sankal Elementary and Beverly Hills Middle School, took seven AP courses, participated in girls tennis, orchestra, debate club, service club, recognized for National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, National Science Honor Society, and National Spanish Honor Society. Likes to sleep, try new food, play with babies, listen to music, and play video games with friends. She volunteered at the municipal library over the summer for over 60 hours and wants to be a children's doctor and study medicine so she can help others. Mohamed Assad attended Charles Kelly Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took six AP courses, recognized for his outstanding accomplishment in AP Government and Politics, outstanding accomplishment in science, FBLA second place for Introduction to Information Technology at Regionals, plays the guitar and likes playing video games, and wants to be an electrical engineer. Amina Bagh attended Alden Magnet School and Primus Elementary School, Ridley and Drexel Hill Middle School, took three AP courses, participated in National English Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, recognized for distinguished honor roll, American Studies Award, AP Spanish V Award, Honors Calculus AB Award, likes baking and cooking, card games and board games, singing, and is a good listener, and plans to go into the medical field and become a doctor. Daniel Carventei attended Highland Park Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took seven AP courses, was involved in the Upper Darby Marching Band, Robotics, Orchestra, String Ensemble, Wind Ensemble, Concert Band, Philly Love Run, PMEA District 12 Orchestra Festival, and wants to pursue a career in anything involving mathematics. John Cavanagh attended Aronamick Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took four AP courses, was involved in basketball for four years, and really likes basketball, provided services through honor societies, and wants to major in finance at either Pitt or Drexel. Fedmeen Charles attended Lewis C. Cassidy Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took two AP courses, participated in College Possible, Outdoor Track, Poetry Club, Naturally Imperfect Club, Concert Choir, Teens for Christ, Bump Out, Tech Crew, Newspaper Club, recognized for Operation Royal Pride Award, Distinguished Honor Roll, Honor Roll, Accelerated Business Award, Honors French II Award, Accelerated Algebra II Award, Second Place Poetry Slam Award, Child Development Award, Business and Law Award, works well with children in creating outfits, love it, and wants to become a teacher and a children's author. Catherine Chu attended Walter M. Sankal Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took six AP courses, was involved with concert choir and high Q, robotics, recognized for National English Honor Society, National Art Honor Society, National Honor Society, Royal Scholar, likes drawing, painting, and reading, and has a special talent of drawing and whistling, and would like to become an environmental scientist. Kevin Daly attended Westbrook Park Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, participated in UD Swimming and recognized for distinguished honor roll, District One Qualifier, Upper Darby Swim Team Most Valuable Player. In addition to swimming, he likes working out, bowling, ice skating, and helping children swim, and would like to be a successful collision repair mechanic. Sarah Demat attended Hillcrest Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took 10 AP courses, participated in robotics, space club, Annenberg, wind ensemble, choir, cybersecurity, math club, high Q, recognized for National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, distinguished honor roll. Likes boating, talking about boating, reading, and napping, and makes a mean cup of tea, and wants to pursue a career in physics. Isabella Desco attended Alden Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took seven AP courses, participated in Royal Scholars Choir, Chorus, Educators Rising, Book Club, National Spanish Honor Society, recognized for distinguished honor roll, Preschool Lab Award, likes to read, binge-watch TV, and play video games, and would like to be an English Language Arts teacher. Isabella, you are hired. Christopher Dwyer attended Hillcrest Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took seven AP courses, was involved in Wind Ensemble, Cybersecurity, Math Team, West Side Story and All Shook Up Pit Orchestra, Teams Engineering, National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, recognized for CAD Critical Analysis Award, George Washington Book Award, third place Delaware Valley Science Fair, Space Science, and our National Merit Scholarship finalist. Likes to play tenor saxophone and the piano, and would like to become a musician and music teacher. Christopher, you are also hired. Sabrina Ella attended Charles Kelly Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took six AP courses, participated in chorus, choir, badminton club, Hispanic Culture Club, National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Society, recognized for distinguished honor roll and the Accounting Award. Likes to watch cooking videos and sing, provided service at the University of Pennsylvania as a hospital volunteer, Saunders House Nursing Home as a volunteer, the municipal library as a summer volunteer, and teen advisory board volunteer. She would like to be a pediatrician or pediatric surgeon. Emily Feden attended Westbrook Park Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took seven AP courses, participated in volleyball, National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Math Teams Engineering, recognized for the AP Chemistry Award, Literary Analysis Award, French III Award, French II Award, Expository Writing Award, Algebra II Award, distinguished honor roll. Likes to crochet and listen to music, and would like to pursue a career in chemical engineering. Luke Finley attended Aronamick Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took eight AP courses, participated in robotics, wind ensemble, jazz ensemble, marching band, World Affairs Council, Student Council, Math Team, Science Fair National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, recognized for AP Scholar with Distinction, National Merit Commended Scholar, Computer Science Excellent Award. Likes cycling and rail fanning. likes cycling and railfanning, and has a special talent of playing the saxophone and solving the Rubik's Cube. He would like to major in computer science and become a software engineer. Mohamed Asib, attended Bywood Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took six AP courses, participated in Soccer, Ethics Bowl, National Spanish Honor Society, recognized for Quest Bridge College Prep Scholar, Quest Bridge Finalist, Rotary Student of the Month, likes learning Arabic, playing soccer, and playing ping pong. He tutors at the local mosque and would like to be an environmental engineer. Nina Hoback, attended Westbrook Park Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took six AP courses, participated in National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, Teams Engineering, has been recognized for First Place Science Fair for Behavioral Science, AP Scholar with Honor, Distinguished Honor Role, and would like to be a physician or physician assistant. Anika Islam, attended East Lansdowne and Garreford Elementary Schools and Drexel Hill Middle School, took nine AP courses, participated in Orchestra, String Ensemble, Choir, Math Club, recognized for Distinguished Honor Role, University of Pennsylvania Book Award, a National Merit finalist, likes napping, watching murder mysteries, and snacking, and would like to pursue a career in something involving STEM. Emily Lehman, attended Garreford Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took four AP courses, was involved in Swim Team, Choir, Encore, National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, recognized for being the Swim Team Captain and AP Scholar, and wants to pursue a career in nursing. Gabriela Labirio, attended Hillcrest Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took three AP courses, was a varsity girls soccer team captain, varsity girls basketball team captain, varsity girls lacrosse captain, member of National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, historian of National Spanish Honor Society, Vice President of the Class of 2020, Member of ROC, recognized for the Presidential Award, Distinguished Honor Role, MVP Award for Soccer, Coaches Award for Basketball, MVP for Lacrosse, likes playing sports, spending time with family and friends, playing and taking care of her dog, and wants to become an educator. Gabby, I cannot wait to hire you. Adrian Locke, attended Highland Park Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took seven AP courses, participated in girls tennis, Chinese Club, Computer Science Club, National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, was the most improved player on the soccer team, likes playing games, reading, and drawing, has a special talent of talking without moving her lips, and organizing binders, and she wants to go into a field involving computers and programming. Stephanie Miranda, attended Highland Park Elementary School and PSIS-119Q Middle School, took seven AP courses, was involved in Chinese Culture Club, Homeroom Rep, National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, Winter Track, Hispanic Culture Club, recognized for the Silver National Spanish Exam, Distinguished Honor Role, Honor Role, and the Spanish IV Award, and wants to be a pediatric surgeon. Gregory Mastek, attended Aronamick Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took seven AP courses, participated in Encore Singer, Concert Choir, Jazz Band, Wind Ensemble, Musicals, recognized for Distinguished Honor Role, Wind Ensemble Member of the Year, District 12 Chorus Participation, likes soccer, music, ping pong, learning Polish, and has a special talent in playing the piano, and wants to be a math/physics teacher. Greg, you just had your interview and you are hired. Violet Nguyen, attended Garreford Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, participated in College Possible, received Distinguished Honor Role, likes video games, provided community service at the Legion of Mary Church and the Sellers Library Summer Program, likes drawing and wants to become a surgeon or pharmacist. Rashni Ohai, attended Maple Leaf International Pakistan Elementary School and Maple Leaf International Middle School, took two AP courses, participated in Female Empowerment Club, Science National Honor Society, College Possible, and Service Club, recognized for Distinguished Honor Role, Outstanding Accomplishment in Health and Physical Education, Duke of Edinburgh Awards Bronze and Silver, likes dancing, watching comedy movies, provided community service at the Upper Darby International Festival, Our Closet, Philly Marathon Community Day at Villanova, has a special talent in making up good mnemonics to help her study, and wants to be a cardiologist or food critic. Aisha Omar, attended Elementary School in Pakistan Classical School System and Beverly Hills Middle School, recognized for Rural Revolution, Badminton Club, Art Club, Women Empowerment Club, College Possible, participated in National Art Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, recognized for Distinguished Honor Role, Math Award, Pre-Calculus Award, provided service as a language teacher at church, nailers run cleanup volunteer, guide for UD Events, likes being on the Teen Advisory Board and Municipal Library and teaching the Quran at a center. She is very punctual and a good problem solver, and wants to become a physician's assistant and make her parents proud. Kung Pham, attended Garreford Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took two AP courses, was a member of the Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation Service Club, received Distinguished Honor Role, and wants to pursue a career in data science. Eric Fantavong, attended Highland Park Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took three AP courses, participated in Future Business Leaders of America, recognized for Distinguished Honor Role, Excellence in English, FBLA Award, likes traveling, writing, reading, and studying business, participated in Cleaning Day for 69th Street, has a special talent of being able to read at a fast rate, and is not sure of his current career path at this time. Jasmine Pierre, attended Walter M. Sankal Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took six AP courses, participated in Royals Computer Science and Community Service, recognized for excellence in the study of rhetoric, Jefferson Book Award, English Award, AP Scholar with Honor, Distinguished Honor Role, likes singing, ceramics, has a special talent of hair braiding, being a Netflix connoisseur, doing ad libs and being highly optimistic, and would like to be a human rights lawyer or social economist. Bakter Reza, attended Larson Elementary School and Nicholas Middle School, took seven AP courses, was a member of the Anti-Bullying Club, is a video game enthusiast, Adobe Photoshop Premier user, runs a graphics business and likes cooking, has a special talent with Photoshop and Premiere Expert, and wants to become a software engineer with a specialization in computer graphics. Tanzila Reyes, went to Bywood Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took seven AP courses, participated in tennis, UDAEF Service Club, ROC, Poetry Club, a member of the National Honor Society, likes to run and read and wants to be a biomedical researcher. Joseph Ritchie, attended Hillcrest Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took five AP courses, was involved in choir, encore singers, wind ensemble, marching band, indoor drumline, musical pit, soccer, swim and dive team, and recognized for Distinguished Honor Role, the Larry Flood Boys Soccer Award, plays the drums, and wants to be an architectural engineer. Parminder Sahoda, attended Regendra Public School and Cambridge International, participated in cricket club, cross-country, recognized for Honor Role and the English Award, liked working out, playing soccer, and spending time with friends, and would like to be a soldier. Nashida Sarkar, attended Walter M. Sankal Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took five AP courses, participated in wind ensemble, concert choir, Annenberg Medical Club, Rural Orientation Corps, recognized for National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Distinguished Honor Role, likes volunteering, watching movies, baking, has a special talent of empathy and optimism, and wants to be a nurse practitioner so she can help people. Riza Sharif, attended Highland Park Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took six AP courses, participated in Hispanic Culture Club, Computer Science Club, Track, National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, recognized for Distinguished Honor Role, the Warner University High School Leadership Award, Physics II Award, likes learning TikTok dances, working out, sleeping, and doing face masks, has a special talent of French braiding and wants to be an engineer. Evelyn Chetzine, attended Garreford Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took three AP courses, participated as the varsity girls soccer captain on the Upper Darby Swim and Dive Team, Varsity Girls Lacrosse, Choir, Encores, DECA, FBLA, National English Honor Society, Vice President of the National Honor Society, President of the Class of 2020, recognized for Freshman Year Character Award, Distinguished Honor Role, Most Improved Award for Soccer, Playmaker Award for Soccer, Hugh O'Brien Youth Leadership Award, has a special talent of driving, navigation, and making slime, and would like to further her education in the business field and eventually take charge of a major company. Gavrenpreet Singh, attended elementary school and middle school in India and Beverly Hills Middle School, took four AP courses, was involved in cross-country, indoor and outdoor track, cricket club, badminton club, Upper Darby Youth Citizen Police Academy, volleyball club, Let's Get Ready, College Possible, recognized as a Quest Bridge finalist, DCU semifinalist, Distinguished Honor Role, Royal Pride, St. Andrew's Spirit 5K, Lansdowne Harvest Hustle 5K, Coaches Award for Cross Country, National English Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, likes chess, running, has a special talent of being trilingual in English, Punjabi, and Hindi, and is learning French and Spanish. He is athletic and wants to be a nanotech engineer. Kalin Snedeker, attended Garreford Elementary School and ET Richardson Middle School, took two AP courses, participated in choir, encore singer, recognized for PMEA District Chorus, likes playing piano and the ukulele, singing, writing, painting, volunteered at Outreach as a nursery assistant, a member of the Worship Team for Potter's House Christian Church, has a special talent of solving a Rubik's Cube, and wants to be a real estate agent. Christine Su, attended Walter M. Sankal Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took three AP courses, was president of Chinese Culture Club, participated in girls tennis, National Honor Society, Secretary of National Spanish Honor Society, Committee Chair of National English Honor Society, recognized for Distinguished Honor Role, Honor Role, likes sewing clothing, learning embroidery, learning new languages, and playing tennis with friends. Has a special talent of reading and writing Chinese, speaking two dialects of Chinese, and baking brownies and cupcakes. Wants to be a manager of a company's department that includes her major and interest of international business. Marguerite Thompson, attended Garreford Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took six AP courses, participated as a member of the yearbook staff, English Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, National Art Honor Society, President of the National Spanish Honor Society, recognized for outstanding accomplishment in biology, excellence in reading, outstanding accomplishment in AP Government and Law, overall excellence in the study of AP Language and Literature, Distinguished Honor Role, likes plant shopping and plant care, yoga, taking care of her pets, getting coffee with friends, going to art museums, listening to 80s new wave music, has a special talent of dog training, baking, makeup, yes, essay writing, can do backhand spring, and wants to be a veterinarian. Lisa Tran, attended Walter M. Sankal Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, took three AP courses, participated in UDAEF Service Club, Chinese Club, Choir, Stage Crew, recognized for Distinguished Honor Role, likes drawing, reading, video games, completed over a hundred hours with Service Club, has a special talent of knitting and wants to be a nurse. Katherine Anne Vivo, attended Aronamick Elementary School and Drexel Hill Middle School, took seven AP courses, participated in Robotics, Cyber Security, Choir, Volleyball, Lunar Planetary Club, Engineering Team, Anti-Bullying Club, recognized for National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Honors Geometry, French I, STEM Scholars Award, likes cooking, playing guitar, art, volunteered at Yaden HCR Manor Care, Stenton Rehab and Nursing Home, and wants to be a physician assistant or nurse practitioner. Yvette Yuboa, attended Bywood Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School, participated in the African Culture Club, Piano Club, Upper Darby Arts and Education Service Club, recognized for Honor Role and Distinguished Honor Role, writing stories, Track, provided services at the Villanova Special Olympics, 2018 Philadelphia Marathon, and International Festival, and wants to become a nurse and real estate investor. The college preparatory program of study at Upper Darby High School ranks among the very best in Delaware County. It continues to require the highest levels of academic rigor and scholastic diligence from participating students. Recent Upper Darby graduates are enrolled at almost 200 colleges through this nation. These young people will eventually join the ranks of successful doctors, lawyers, teachers, engineers, business and public sector managers, and a host of other professionals who once attended Upper Darby High School. From the Class of 2020, hundreds of graduates will pursue post-secondary education. Upper Darby High School is proud of these top achievers of the Class of 2020. They reflect the caliber of students enrolled in Upper Darby High School's superior academic programs. It is my pleasure to congratulate the top achievers, the top 5% of the Class of 2020 for Upper Darby High School. Congratulations.
Congratulations to our top 5% in the Class of 2020. You inspire us. We are deeply proud of you and appreciate your hard work. We look forward to seeing the amazing ways you will spread royal pride and contribute to making the world a better place. We wish you the best and may all of your dreams come true. Remember to come back and give back and expand your talents and passions in your community. Congratulations again. Thank you. The third item on the work session agenda is a virtual presentation of the Service to Children Award. Since 1999, the Service to Children Award has been presented to a wide range of role players within our school district community for shaping, protecting, and enhancing the lives of our most valuable resources, our children. Now in its 21st year, Upper Darby School District continues in the tradition of recognizing the recipient of this prestigious award for their unselfish dedication to our children, serving as a model for inspiration and emulation. We are blessed to work with so many in our organization who exemplify these qualities every day and could very well record, receive this recognition. This year, we have actually selected two persons whom we feel have demonstrated the hard work, flexibility, collaboration, teamwork that provides the opportunity, unity, and excellence our students deserve. We are pleased to announce that our Service to Children Award recipients for 2020 are Bob Holinsky, the Director of Technology, and Wendy Elgart, the Director of Federal Programs, Grants, Food Service, Counseling, and Social Work. Bob Holinsky joined the Upper Darby School District in 2014. He has worked under three superintendents in overseeing the infrastructure of technical and networking operations and systems throughout the entire district. He is responsible for boosting efficiency, increasing technology, and improving connectivity in each office and in every school. He and his amazing team of IT specialists were instrumental in distributing over 3,300 Chromebooks to families as part of the district's COVID-19 Response and Education Opportunities Plan. He and his team serviced these laptops for families as needed and added over thirty wireless hotspots for families in our community that did not have internet access. A member of his team, Chuck Laught, said about him, "Bob led the charge and rallied the department so that our students and teachers could continue the learning process. Without him, I am not sure if our response could have been as successful." Bob's commitment to the Upper Darby School District is evident. We are appreciative for his service to the Upper Darby School District and are happy to recognize him with the Service to Children Award. Bob and his family are joining us virtually tonight. Bob, would you like to say a few words?
Mr. Brown, thank you very much for this great, great award. Very honored and humbled to have this. And without such a great team behind me, and also a great team above me, helping me and supporting me in everything we did, makes this award viable for me. So, thank you very much, everybody, and it's been a pleasure working in the Upper Darby School District, and I'm happy to be here every day. Thank you. Thank you.
Bob, I have to just add one thing of my own personal reflection. You know, I work in technology, so it only took one conversation with you to recognize your skill set and your ability and your commitment to doing great work. So, it's a pleasure having you as our Director of Technology, and congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'd like to recognize our second recipient of the Service to Children Award this year, Ms. Wendy Elgart. You know, all of those titles that I just named a little while ago. Wendy Elgart joined the Upper Darby School District in 1994. She has served in various capacities, still serves in a lot of capacities during her tenure in the district, being willing to take on any challenge that she is asked to take up, which is a testament to her flexibility and commitment to the district and our students. In her current role as the Director of Federal Programs, comma, Grants, comma, Food Service, comma, Counseling and Social Work, as you can imagine from the length of her title, she takes on a lot. She is responsible for managing federal programs in our district in accord with state and federal guidelines and district policies, managing all of our title programs, 1, 2, 3, and 5 programs, monitoring parent involvement activities in schools and submitting reports on these programs to the Department of Education on these programs. She seeks out and writes federal and state grants that will provide much-needed funding for our students and school programs. She's been instrumental in bringing all sorts of funding into our district. For example, she secured the recent $491,000 equity grant which allows the district to purchase additional Chromebooks, which puts us even closer to our one-to-one device goal for our students. Another recent example is the over $2.5 million Safe Schools Grant, which the district is using to improve school safety in our elementary, middle, and high schools. She manages student breakfast and lunch service, ensuring that we are compliant with the National School Lunch and Breakfast Programs. She's responsible for the annual Community Eligibility Provision, which allows all schools in our district to offer breakfast and lunch at no charge to all families while eliminating our family's need to complete the traditional school meal application. In her capacity as the Director of Counseling and Social Work, she collaborates with the school-based mental health professionals across the district to ensure that the students are supported with resources they need to be successful. In each of her capacities, she collaborates with an amazing group of professionals, including contractors, which supports our getting the best for our students. Her commitment to the district has been outstanding. Let me show you Wendy's award. Feels like it's a little heavy to him, Bob's, but I won't tell him that. Really nice award. Wendy and her family are joining us virtually tonight. Wendy, would you like to say a few words?
Oh, Mr. Brown, I am so honored. I, I don't even know what to say. I really, I'm really touched. So, thank you so much. I love working for the school district. And this really means a lot to me. Thank you.
Congratulations, Wendy. Your reaction says it all. You truly are a star here in our district and we're very lucky to have you. Thank you for wearing the cape that you do and doing all the things you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I feel honored to work here every day. It's been really a wonderful board and administration. So, thank you.
Thank you. We are pleased to announce this year's Service to Children Award recipients, Mr. Bob Holinsky and Ms. Wendy Elgart. Congratulations to you both and thank you for your service to the students of the Upper Darby School District. The final, the final item on the work session agenda is a virtual recognition of the 2019, 2020 Student Board Representatives. I would like to thank Ms. Karen Shazadi and Ms. Lamia Mim personally, on our behalf of the School Board of Directors for their dedication and commitment to serving in their roles this school year. They took their responsibility of providing student voice and insight into their peers' thinking very seriously. I mean, that was evident when we listened to their reports. They really captured the pulse of the whole student body. Their leadership was much needed as we worked through some very critical matters of the school year, from facilities improvements to bringing in new curriculum and programming to addressing some controversies we faced this year. One of which went viral on social media and significantly impacted many students and their families and staff as well. Karen and Lamia supported us in our fight for fair funding through our press conference this year. They participated in other speaking events with organizations like PCCY and others, where they spoke eloquently about our district, our students, our strengths, and our needs. They pushed on in their service through a worldwide pandemic resulting in our schools being closed throughout the remainder of the school year. They, along with their peers, helped us understand further the tremendous sense of loss, sacrifice, and grief our seniors in particular are feeling over the premature end of their final school year. Karen and Lamia will go down in Upper Darby history as the first student representatives to participate in virtual school board meetings. They worked hard to represent our district and achieve this exceptionally. They helped to provide the lens that we will always want at the table when discussing issues and making decisions. They were fearless and open and authentic. They made us laugh and even brought us to tears at times, like tonight. They are amazing young people who will go on to represent their alma mater wonderfully. Thank you for your service to the Upper Darby School District. Thanks to your parents and your families for supporting you in your service. We have a little gift for you from the School Board of Directors. We will make sure you get them. We love you and God bless.
Can I just say something really quickly? I'm not trying to cry, but thank you so much. It means so much.
Listen, I'm running this meeting, sir. You can't do that to me.
I miss you guys so much. Like, thank you. This is a huge honor. I know Karen feels the same way, but it was a huge honor to be part of this.
All right. My last instruction is to please meet your microphone. You're killing me. All right. The regular meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 6:15 until 7:25 for matters to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by the Pennsylvania Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meetings, there were personnel and litigation matters. Role call, Mr. Rogers, please.
As I call your name, can you please state you're present and you can hear the proceeding? Dr. Haig?
I am present and I can hear the proceeding.
Mr. Des Neuers? Mr. War Savage?
I am present and can hear the proceeding.
Mr. Neal? Ms. Dawes?
Present.
Mr. Fields?
I am present and I can hear the proceedings.
Ms. Curry?
I am present and I can hear the proceeding.
Ms. Mitchell?
I am present and I can hear the proceedings. I don't believe we could hear Mr. Neal when he spoke. I think he is here.
Mr. Neal?
So, we're gonna have to be able to hear him, so he's gonna have to chime in before we can give him credit for being here. We'll let him work on his sound. You can keep taking role.
Mr. Brown?
Here. Okay.
While you're doing that, before, as you conclude that, I just want to remind those who are joining us right now, so we'll wait for Mr. Neal to re-log back in, that those who are wishing to participate this evening can do so by sending an email to committeequestions@upperdarbstd.org. Please make sure you leave your name, your address, and the report with which you'd like to comment. Those who have sent us your comment prior to 7:30 will make sure that we read that during the general comments section before the conclusion of the meeting. We're also allowing individuals to phone in a comment at 610-789-7200, extension 2000. Again, please leave your name, your address, and the board report with which you'd like to comment on and we'll make sure that we address that before taking action on those board reports. Thank you, Board President Brown.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, and please feel free to interject at it at any interval you see fit.
Hi, this is David Neal. I am present and I can hear the proceedings. I do apologize. I, um, there's a mute button on my headset that was, I must have hit. And I was trying to unmute it on the screen, not on the headset. So, I do apologize for that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Neal. Glad you're here. Okay. Policy 003 allows the board to suspend policies or parts of policies when appropriate. Therefore, due to the current ongoing crisis and the governor's closure order, I make the following motions to suspend language in two of the board's policies until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Policy 006.1, which regulates attendance at meetings via electronic communications, I move to suspend the language regarding board members to be present. Specifically, the language would be, "A majority of board members shall be physically present at a board meeting when a board member attends through electronic communications." In Policy 006, which governs other requirements of board meetings, I move the suspension of the language requiring that those members of the public wishing to participate be present. Specifically, the language in the section titled "Public Participation" would remove the words that read "Present at a Board Meeting." Do I have a second?
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? Does anyone abstain? Motion carries. Okay, the minutes of the combined work session regular meeting of May 12, 2020 is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I second that.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? Ms. Beaufort.
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Hearing none, those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carries. Mrs. Curry, the report of the secretary, please.
Thank you, President Brown. The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Mrs. Mitchell. I second that.
Are there any comments from the board? Mrs. Beaufort, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Mr. Neal, the report of the treasurer, please.
Thank you, President Brown. The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member, has been made to, available to the public, so I move for its adoption.
Leah Dawes, I second. This is Mrs. Curry. I second that.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public, Ms. Beaufort?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The budgeted personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the public and to the board and are recorded as part of the record. No vote is required. And now we'll have the report of the superintendent by the esteemed Dr. Dan McGary.
Thank you, Board President Brown. I'd first like to take a moment to recognize us, a continued recognition of Mrs. Simone's effort and the high school's effort to celebrate the top 5%. Outstanding job. Jason Taylor, I know you're here with us now, and Aronda, compliments to you for putting that together as well. I think the high school has put so many unbelievable videos together celebrating our kids. So Jason, I know you can't comment right now, but thank you. Kelly, uh, Aronda as well, and the team here at the high school, outstanding job. I also want to take an opportunity to, um, recognize Samaje Bailey Sap, Westbrook Park Elementary School student, for the DCIU Right to Education Local Task Force 2020 Making a Difference Student Award. Uh, Samaje, we will certainly be mailing out and sending out this recognition, um, that I will sign and Board President Brown will sign, as well as your principal. You should receive that soon. We're also going to recognize, uh, Ms. Maureen Khalil, Highland Park Elementary School. She's a teacher for the DCIU Right to Education Local Task Force 2020 Making a Difference Teacher Award. Congratulations, Maureen. I know Dr. Council's here with us tonight. A lot of proud Highland Park, as well as, I'm sure, Ms. Curry and, and Mr. Brown. Uh, and Highland Park, I think, did win the top 5%, beat, beat, beat Bywood for the first time in a long time. So compliments to all of you. I also want to just take a moment, before I go into my full report tonight, to, uh, to say to Ume and to Curtis, congratulations for earning this, probably one of the, one of the highest, uh, most respected opportunities in the school district is to be a rep to the, uh, school board, a student rep to the school board. So compliments to you. I, I do want to say to you, um, personally, um, you have, you have tremendous shoes to fill. And I know that terminology is used, uh, frequently and probably too much, but for me, Karen and Lamia have meant a great deal. Um, this has been a tremendously challenging school year on many levels, um, and there have been weekends or late afternoons or collaborating, uh, late at night through a Google Doc with, with Aronda or Ms. Simone or Dr. Manfree and Lamia and Karen as students that we've invited them into the decision-making and what we process through here on the school district. Um, Karen, at times in particular, has been somebody who has challenged me to make my own recordings of myself and, and put them out, uh, to the district. And I want to say to Karen and Lamia, um, without getting choked up, I could not be more proud of the two of you. I hope that you do come back to this community after you achieve your greatness and your education and give back and continue to give back to the school district. No greater compliment to those of us in education is to see you come back here and raise your family in this school district and participate that way. Uh, just on a personal level, I, I can't thank you enough for what you've done to help me, challenge me, and help me grow as a, as a professional. So Karen and Shazadi, uh, thank you so much for all that you've done. Um, Karen, Shazadi, and Lamia Mim, thank you so much for, for everything you've done to help us here in this school district. It, it means a lot to me. Good evening, Upper Darby Royal Family. Board President Brown, members of the, uh, Upper Darby Board of Directors, other administrators, staff, and students. I would like to take a moment to reflect on the fact that at this time, our country, community, staff, our students and their families are hurting right now. We grieve over the tragic death of George Floyd and offer our condolences to his family and friends. We are further saddened that the real message seems to be getting lost in the midst of the reactions of some. Over George Floyd's death, it's another example of the unsettled legacy of race relations in this country. I want to be crystal clear. This school district will not tolerate racist behaviors. We are better than this. Over the weekend and throughout the day today, I've communicated with staff, our chief of police, administrators, board members, and have heard from students. Our community is hurting. Our students and many staff are suffering. There is an even greater impact on our African-American staff. It is one thing to rationalize our way through this pandemic, but the recent events that have transpired as a result of the unnecessary and wrongful death of George Floyd have inflamed already damaging and traumatic experiences for our youth. What is all of this doing? It is creating fear. Fearing people because of the color of their skin will not unite us. Continuing to perpetuate stereotypes and hate will not unite us. There are those who will intentionally implant fear in our communities and in our country with horrific motives. We cannot allow fear to cloud our ability to make real change and from supporting our fellow Americans, other human beings with real hopes and dreams for their future and that of their children. Action rooted in social, in real social and systemic, systemic change will unite us. The community members who peacefully protest the racial injustice in our nation are the real hope for change. The community members of all races and backgrounds who helped clean up after the incidents on Sunday are the hope for change. It is the parents, our neighbors, and our friends who must work to confront the ingrained prejudice and injustice in our society for real change to take place. It will take all of us to work together to accomplish these very complex goals. We have such a wonderfully diverse community. Now is the time to show that we can come together. This community can and will come together to be an example of the change that has to happen. We can and will work together to look for solutions, working with township resources and local, uh, organizations, community representatives, parents and students to address issues such as the one we've experienced over this past week and over time. This is one of the goals I am hoping the community forum I presented to the board some months ago will help to achieve. I have to be honest, I've struggled to find the right words to say in order to support the students we serve, to provide the care our students deserve. Right now, the fear, it's real, being showcased and perpetuated via social media is damaging. During our, our work with Lakeside, a consultant in our district that provides training and resources on trauma-informed instruction, we have been learning about the effects trauma have on people in general and children in particular. We learned that trauma affects one's brain activity, motivation, ability to process information, and ability to make good decisions. Our community, our students, are listening and seeing all of this. It is nearly impossible for them to avoid it. They are watching news reports of persons who look like them being killed, hearing police sirens. They are seeing and hearing the tears of pain and heartache, and they are looking for answers. I am deeply troubled about the impact of what our students are witnessing and what it is having on them. The racial injustice and the recent events that are occurring in the aftermath of the unjust death of George Floyd is certainly detrimental to the emotional health and well-being of our children. This also affects our staff from all backgrounds. It pains me that our children are suffering. All of our children are suffering. They are afraid and unsure of how to react to all of this. As the superintendent of this district, I, and I mean we, want it to be the solution and a resource for change. I want this community to be proud of our schools. I want our staff to be proud of what we represent. Eli Vazell and Nobel Laureate said the following, "No human race is superior. No religious faith is inferior. All collective judgments are wrong. Only racists make them." I want you to know that we are here for you and for the community we serve. These are without question very sensitive times, and I am concerned about the long-lasting traumatic impact all of this is having on our students from kindergarten through 12th grade. Our students will need our collective efforts, love, and I mean love, and listening ear to navigate all of this heartache and see this community as a support. As a result, we are currently finalizing plans to support our students with people's service staff at all levels. Even in this virtual environment, we have to do something. And just as a reminder, we are in this together. Board President Brown, this concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McGary, for that powerful message. We will now have an update on the May 26, 2020 Education and Pupils Services Committee meeting. Mrs. Curry will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including the public comments, can be found on board docs. Mrs. Curry?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Brown, President Brown. Um, one moment, I'm trying to locate. Okay, I apologize for the silence.
No problem at all.
Okay. So, um, the Education and Pupils Services Committee meeting took place on Tuesday, May 26, 2020. There were two agenda summer items. One required board action. Number one was the ACSI school-level plans, which require board action, and agenda item number two was delayed school times for adolescents, which was informational. Dr. Manfree, Dr. Youson, Mr. Zalerno, and Dr. McCarthy Frick presented the additional targeted support and improvement school-level plans for Charles Kelly Elementary School and Beverly Hills Middle School. The ACSI designation for schools and plans are requirement, are requirement of Pennsylvania Consolidated State Plan for the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA. This item is for board action this evening and at a special voting meeting on June 16, 2020, um, and correlated to all goals of the comprehensive plan. I, I repeat that, this, um, item is for board action at a special voting meeting on June 16, 2020. The second agenda item, um, was delayed school start times for adolescents, which is informational. Mr. Marshallak provided an update of the survey results and parent form data collected at the chair. Estimated costs were reviewed along with the options selected from the district survey. This item was informational only and correlated to goals one and four of the comprehensive plan. All of these items can be found on board docs. There were no public comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Curry. We will now have an update on the May 26, 2020 Finance and Operations Committee meeting report. Dr. Hague will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on board docs. Dr. Hague?
Thank you, Board President Brown. The Finance and Operations Committee met on Tuesday, May 26. There were five agenda items, three of which require board action. The first agenda item was a COVID-19 preparedness update. Sorry, I apologize. Excuse the noise in the background. Um, this item was informational. The district administration provided an update on a preliminary logistical space planning and cost estimates to provide a safe and healthy learning environment for students and staff in the new school year. This item correlated to goal one of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. The second item was an update on online school tax payment options. This requires board action tonight. The district administration provided an update on its progress on implementing an online school tax payment process. The presentation included specific features of the new process, costs associated with the program, implementation timeline, and communication and customer service plan. Administration will seek approval to move forward with the implementation of the online school tax payment option at tonight's meeting. Um, the third item also required board action. It was an update on the administration building relocation. Uh, administration discussed all past options considered for the relocation of district administration offices, as well as the potential plans to renovate the 8201 North Lansdowne Avenue property to house the district's administration offices currently based at Aronnamink. Two basic proposals, one with the sanitation department and one without the sanitation department, which is currently located at that property. These two, two different proposals were provided. Uh, 8201 is, North Lansdowne Avenue is currently operated as the district's maintenance and transportation hub. This item correlated to goal one of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. The fourth item was informational. It was a budget update for the 2020, 2021 budget. The district administration provided an update. The presentation included a summary of impacts on the current and future budgets. More specifically, administration presented variations of the budget based on the impact of a state-mandated 0% tax increase. This item correlated to goal one of the Upper Darby School District Comprehensive Plan. And finally, the fifth agenda item was updated policies. These will require board action tonight. Poli, the following policies were reviewed, 335, family and medical leave, 626, federal fiscal compliance, 810.1, drug and alcohol testing of covered drivers, and 904, public attendance at school events. There were no pu, public comments specific to any of these agenda items.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hague. Next, the Instruction and Curriculum Report. Mrs. Curry?
Thank you, President Brown. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption. Leah Dawes, I second.
This is Mrs. Mitchell. Second.
Thank you, Ms. Dawes. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Beaufort?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Okay, the Personnel Report. Mrs. Mitchell?
Thank you, President Brown. The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public, and I move for its adoption.
Leah Dawes, I second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
Yes, I have some comments.
Okay.
Thank you, President Brown. This is Mrs. Mitchell again.
Thank you.
Um, I just do want to acknowledge our five retirees. Um, there are a combined, some of these employees have been with the district for 20 years. Um, they are Christine Tatchenucci from Highland Park, uh, Donna Martin from the high school, a building assistant, Donna Persha from Westbrook Park, and two bus drivers, a, a bus driver, um, Nate Nathaniel Fuller, and Elaine Clark, a transportation assistant. I want to take the time to thank all these employees for their service to the district and for the students. Um, we wish you a healthy and enjoyable retirement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mitchell. We second that for the, um, half of the entire board, may they have a restful and peaceful retirement. Thank you. Are there any other comments from the board? Don Fields?
Uh, thank you, President Brown. Thank you, Vice President Mitchell. Uh, I'd like to add that my sister, Eileen Fields, is a 1982 graduate of Upper Darby, and she is also retiring from teaching this year. She's retiring from Uppermoreland School District after 32, 32 years as a music teacher and educator. Uh, Eileen was one of the first participants in summer stages and was actually in Upper Darby's choral program. This was before Mrs. Benelion started at the high school, if you can believe that. Her list of accomplishments is long, but I think my favorite is her mentoring of close to a dozen student teachers over the years. My sister shared with me that she has been looking forward to retirement, but not like this, not with the last few months being done virtually. So for all the employees that are retiring this year, I know this probably isn't how you envisioned your last few months, and I'm sorry you weren't able to finish the year with your students. Uh, that being said, I do, and the entire board, thank you very much for the years of service and the dedication to our kids. And that's, that's my statement.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Are there any other comments from the board? Ms. Beaufort, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Okay, there, uh, Mr. Desneuer is, is not present, right?
He is not.
Oh, Dr. Hague will read them. Okay, Dr. Hague, the policy report.
Thank you, uh, President Brown. So the first reading policies tonight, there, um, there's one policy, policy 707, the use of school facilities. The changes to this policy and the new, um, AR administrative regulation, um, originated from the school board and administration both desiring that the policy be adapted. Sorry, is there a comment? I couldn't, thought I heard something that, okay.
Nope, you're good. Continue.
Uh, so the board and administration both desire that the policy be adapted to the new structure of the relationship between the school district and Upper Darby Township and policy language, and that co, policy language and costs be updated and clarified. Simultaneously, the school board delegated to administration the responsibility of setting reasonable fees and charges, so language specifying this deregulation was added to the policy, and the fee schedule itself was moved from the policy to the new administrative reg, regulation, which is 707 AR3. There are two items in the policy that, uh, Mr. Desneuer's wanted to draw attention to. One is carnivals. Policy 707 still contains language prohibiting carnivals, but now does so under the umbrella of a type of event called a potentially athletic field damaging event. Um, it should be noted that as a longstanding event, the school board has provided the people of Clifton Heights, a means by which their carnival can still be held. This is the memorandum of understanding that has been offered to the community groups in Clifton Heights. Um, unfortunately, this memorandum has not yet been signed. Um, the second thing that Mr. Desneuer's wanted to draw attention to is the fireworks policy. Policy 707 now states that the only type of fireworks allowed on school district property are what Pennsylvania law defines as "display class fireworks." These are professional fireworks displays. Such displays are only to be used by professionals with a permit. It should be noted that the application for a July 4th fireworks display in Clifton Heights this year was received prior to the update to policy 707 being introduced or approved. So the new language concerning fireworks does not apply to this year's July 4th Clifton Heights fireworks display. Um, any questions about the above two items can be directed to Superintendent McGary. Um, and then the, the, uh, other items are the second reading items, so we have already discussed these at one meeting. Um, and this is, the comments here are based primarily on the PSBA, Pennsylvania School Boards Association, uh, summary of changes. Um, uh, sorry, the, the, so the summary that, that is, is given here and, and, um, is available already from the primary, for the previous meeting. So it's an update to policy 3, 35, family and medical leave, policy 626, federal fiscal compliance, policy 8, 810.1, drug and alcohol testing, covered drivers, and policy 904, public attendance at school events. So these were reviewed at our committee meeting, um, last week. And that is all, uh, President Brown.
Thank you, Dr. Hague, for reading that so eloquently in Mr. Desneuer's absence. So the policy report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Leah Dawes, I second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Beaufort?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you very much. All tho, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The Supplies Report. Mr. War Savage?
Good evening, President Brown. Good evening, friends and family of the Upper Darby School District. Pleasure to be with you this evening. The Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move forward, for its adoption.
Leah Dawes, I second.
Are there any comments from the board? Mrs. Beaufort, are, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Mr. Fields, the Facilities Report and the Use of Facilities Report.
Thank you, President Brown. Um, I'm going to start with Facilities Report approval. Uh, the Facilities Report, uh, is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Mrs. Mitchell. Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Beaufort?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those... Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried on the Facilities Report. The Use of Facilities Report, Mr. Fields.
Thank you, President Brown. Uh, uh, first, let me read the Use of Facilities Report. Upper Darby School District Use of Facilities. The Board resolves that in light of the ongoing health crisis resulting from COVID- nineteen and until further resolution ending this directive, there are requests to the district for the use of district facilities, whether inside or outside, shall be subject to any CDC and Pennsylvania Department of Health recommended steps and precautions related to preventing the spread of COVID- nineteen virus current at the time of the scheduled event. At the time of this resolution, that included wearing a cloth mask, avoiding groups greater than ten people, and frequent hand washing. However, it is anticipated that these recommendations will change over time. The permission granted by the board to use district facilities is expressly conditioned upon an agreement by the groups to follow and enforce among the participants the current guidelines in place during such use, and the administration is directed to communicate with groups granted conditional permission by the board and to cancel that permission where the group making the request cannot commit to following and enforcing such guidelines. Groups that are discovered during their scheduled events to be noncompliant may have their event prematurely terminated and jeopardize their future requests.
Okay, the Use of Facilities Report are in the hand, the Use of Facilities Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Leah Dawes, second.
Are there any other comments from the board? Dr. Hague?
I just wanted, so I mentioned it briefly in the policy report, but I just wanted to mention again that these, um, youth groups in Clifton Heights, they have historical, um, uses of these fields that, um, include items that are prohibited under our policies. And it is, of course, our responsibility to follow our policies. And so I really hope, I can't, I can't quite understand why, um, these, the memorandum of understanding has not been, um, signed by these groups, but I really, really hope that they will, um, look through it again and, and consider signing because there, we're going to reach some increasingly awkward positions, I think, when, when they ask for us to approve things that go against our stated policies. And if they would sign the memorandum of understanding, that would, that would essentially, um, relieve of us of that, of that challenge and, and of the, of the question of going against our policies. So I really hope that they will continue to, that they will consider that, and I hope that any community members who are in contact with, with, um, people involved in those groups will encourage them to sign the memorandum so that they can continue to use their, 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 uh, the fields as they have historically.
Thank you, Dr. Hague, for pointing, pointing that out. The MOU was designed specifically for that reason, to give them permission to, uh, still hold the events that they, uh, that are near and dear to their heart. So thank you for pointing that out. Are there any other comments from the board? Mr. Fields?
Uh, yeah, uh, thank you, uh, President Brown. Um, I, I think I just want to reiterate, uh, Dr. Hague's statement that I, it would behoove, uh, the applicants to, you know, commit to the memorandum, memorandum of understanding, the MOU. Um, you know, I, I know there's a lot of back and forth between the district and some of these groups. Um, and it, I, I just don't think the kids should have to pay for that. I don't want to put the kids in the middle of that. So, um, that's a double-edged sword. So please, uh, please, you know, we, the, the MOU is something that can be discussed, uh, and talked about and signed, uh, so that we're all more comfortable, uh, with the use of these, of facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Are there any other comments from the board? Mrs. Buford, are there any comments from the public?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor of the Use of Facilities Report, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record.
Uh, this is Don Fields. Uh, I, uh, there are four items on the report. I approve the Clifton Heights Fourth of July Association, um, request. So I'm an aye for that one. Uh, the other three, I'm a no. Uh, just based on, please sign the MOU.
Okay, Mr. Rogers, did you get that? Okay.
This is David Neal. I oppose all four.
Okay. Anyone else, any other aye oppose, any, anyone else opposing, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Okay, those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carries. The Food Services Report, please, Mr. Fields. Mr. Fields?
Ah, sorry, mute button, sorry. Um, the Food Service Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
This is Mrs. Curry. I second it.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Buford?
There are no comments from the public.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by s-
Sorry, I, I oppose the Food Service Management Service Renewal. This is David Neal, and I approve the Food Service Summer Feeding Program.
Okay, uh, those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. The Finance and Budget Report, Dr. Hague.
Thank you, Doctor, thank you, President Brown. Uh, the Finance and Budget Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Leah Dawes, second.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public, Mrs. Buford?
There are no comments from the public.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carried. Okay, now we're at the collateral assignment reports. We'll start with the Delaware County Community College. Mrs. Curry, do you have something?
Thank you, President Brown. At this time, the, um, Delaware County Community College Liaison Board has not met. Um, and, um, we do, I, I would like to say and just serve as a reminder that, um, Delaware County Community College has put out a pretty, um, extensive, um, I would call it more than a flyer, but a very nice piece on what they plan to do for students who are considering possible gap years as a result of COVID- nineteen. Um, and that they, um, you know, will be freezing the tuition again. So they put out a nice piece, um, looking at, um, just the options that DCCC will be giving students that decide to defer their attendance to other places or decide on a gap year, um, due to COVID- nineteen. And that's all I have.
Thank you very, very much for that information and report. Uh, any IU board-related business, Mrs. Mitchell?
Thank you, President Brown. Um, the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board, which I serve on, um, has not met since our last school board meeting, since we're meeting one week early. We meet tomorrow night and next Wednesday. So, sorry about that.
Okay, thank you very much for that information. Uh, Legislative Council, Mr. Fields, do you have anything?
Thank you, President Brown. The Legislative Council does not meet over the summer. Um, the only part I have is that Harrisburg, uh, has passed a five-month budget, uh, that, that maintains, um, uh, school funding. It's a five-month budget, so we'll come back to it, you know, uh, October, November. Uh, and, uh, Vice President Mitchell has a comment on this.
I just wanted to remind the board and Dr. McGary that Friday morning at eight AM is our virtual legislative breakfast, and, um, our legislators should be in attendance. I think it would be a good opportunity to thank them for voting on a full-year budget for, um, the school district that does not decrease, um, revenue over last year. So it would be a great opportunity. So I hope everyone stands at eight o'clock, students getting their credentials in your email.
Thank you, Mr. Fields and Mrs. Mitchell, for that report. Thank you very much for that reminder about the Legislative Breakfast, virtual. Thank you. The Mendenhall Tyson Scholarship Committee, uh, Dr. Hague, I, I think your work is done, but, uh, you may have some parting comments about that.
Yeah, absolutely. And actually, at our last meeting, we had already met, but of course, the, um, recipients were a secret. And I just wanted to take a moment, though, of course, since these are all stellar students, they were already highlighted in the top five percent presentation. I do, as the Mendenhall Tyson Board Representative, uh, want to give a shout out to our four recipients we have for the class of twenty twenty. We have Christopher Dwyer, who's going to University of Pennsylvania. We have Emily Faden, who's going, or excuse me, I believe it's Faden, who's going to Drexel University. Tarana Anana, who's going to Drexel University, and Sarah Demat, who's going to the University of Edinburgh. Um, the, the students were just unbelievably impressive in terms of the variety and the depth of their, of their commitments and activities. Um, and, uh, I'm excited that we're able to give them this great scholarship, which is four years, seven thousand dollars a year for each student, which is really a tremendous thing for them and, and a great thing that this community does for our students. So, that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Hague. Dr. McGary, you have a comment?
I just, I agree with Dr. Hague, and, and all those kids are amazing, unbelievable accomplishments. Uh, just in particular, uh, Christopher Dwyer. Um, his mom has been teaching here, uh, as a special education teacher for a long time in this district. So, you know, as a staff member, to see your child accomplish so much, and as a great parent, to, to Sue Dwyer, if you're watching tonight, and Christopher, if you're watching. Chris, thank your mom and dad. Your, your mom's been an awesome asset to the Upper Darby School District, and I just wanted to point out that she's a member of the Upper Darby family, is a teacher as well, and has done an excellent job.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. So did I hear correct, Dr. Hague, two of the four going to Drexel University, my alma mater, is that correct?
That is correct, President Brown.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I heard it correctly. Thank you. Um, Home and School, Mr. Warsavage.
Thank you very much, President Brown. Uh, the Home and School has not met since our last board meeting. That being said, I do know that in our collaboration with the township and bringing everyone together in light of recent events, uh, it's my understanding that as the board representative for Home and School, uh, that we will be having a seat at that table. And it is really, really super important that we lean on the eye on the ground, that being our Home and School, to really take the temperature of the district and something. It's so important that we have this to be on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warsavage. Uh, Technology, I, I'll just going to, again, uh, acknowledge Mr. Hulinski for his award. I'll, I'll say that under the Technology Committee. He's an incredible professional, uh, and I can appreciate his talents as an engineer. Uh, he's the real deal, and we're lucky to have him. So just wanted to give him another shout out. Mr. Fields, did you have anything to add from a technology perspective? Okay, um, PSBA, uh, Mrs. Curry, did you have anything? I do have some highlights from the, uh, Liaison Insider, but I'll let you go if you have some other things I don't want to overlap. So I'll let you go. Do you have something to, uh, share?
Yeah, thank you, um, President Brown. I just wanted to remind board members that, um, PSBA is accepting submissions for the twenty, twenty-one legislative platform. Um, our school board is invited to build PSBA's legislative agenda by submitting proposals for consideration for the association's twenty twenty-one legislative platform, and the deadline is June thirtieth. Um, also, just as a, just as an aside, um, I did, was able to participate in a webinar that, um, the NSBA gave, um, just giving a lot of highlights, um, for the summer months and how to, um, for the feeding programs and different resources that, um, I know some of them were put onto the Upper Darby School District website. So that's all that I have for now.
Thank you. And just a few highlights that they, uh, sent in the Insider, um, and I think, uh, Mr. Fields mentioned it's the General Assembly adopted a twenty twenty, twenty-one state budget. Um, PSBA has launched a funding mandate relief advocacy campaign. Uh, they're pleased to announce the campaign to support public schools, a new advocacy effort designed to relieve school districts from the effects of state-imposed underfunded and unfunded and underfunded mandates and provide the flexibility needed to weather the challenges of COVID- nineteen pandemic. More to come on that. Um, PSBA and, and various education groups form a school reopening task force. So PSBA and other key education organizations have joined together to create a task force to develop a series of policy considerations, recommendations, and resources related to the reopening of schools. So I know Dr. McGary and his team, uh, is working hard on a very comprehensive plan with a million options and just trying to maximize, uh, our unique needs and, and make sure we can open schools properly. Dr. McGary, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I was going to come out with some comments tonight, but given the circumstances, I don't know that anybody's willing to really hear that, what we're doing. So we're going to put a pl, plan in place. I'm going to also invite the mayors of our communities that we serve to participate, members of our board. Um, as Damian, uh, Mr. Warsavage said, some home and schools, um, obviously Dr. Manfree, Mr. Salerno, and Mr. Marshall Act to participate, and, and Dr. Council, uh, to go out to the public as well and review the process that we're going to go through to try to reopen our schools. We know they're a vital part of getting our economy going up and running. And just to impress upon people, even if we're green, um, without a vaccination, we're under the impression still that we'll have to practice social distancing. So we're going to go through a, a couple of different scenarios and a couple of different plans. Uh, we want to make sure that our teachers' union and our community are aware of what we're attempting to do. Um, uh, so we're taking into account, we're also putting out a survey to our, to our community, our parents, and also to our staff to gather some feedback prior to holding that, that meeting. But we will vet that with the board and, and the public and give as much advance notice as possible, for President Brown. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McGary. And, and lastly, uh, from PSBA, uh, they mentioned that PDE issues guidance on the Keystone exams. The PA Department of Education has released guidance to address the various impacts related to the cancellation of this spring's administration of the Keystone exams. The guidance also addresses upcoming Keystone testing windows. So I'm sure we'll get more information about that as we move forward. Um, next, the Policy Committee, Dr., Mr. Desnoyers is not here, but Dr. Hague did a great job of addressing the, uh, the various policies in place right now. Um, Communications, Mr. Neal, uh, or Mrs. Mitchell, did you have anything to add from a communications perspective?
I don't have anything, but I did want to thank, um, the, the administration, um, Ms. Buford, Dr. McGary, and the principals for all the communications that you have, um, worked through. I mean, there's so many listed on our website, and I, I get the notifications from the schools that I am the liaison for, and I'm sure all the other board members do, and that everyone has been doing an incredible job trying to keep connected during this difficult time. So I just want to thank you at the end of the school year. Job well done in a very, very, very challenging environment. So thank you.
Thank you.
No additional comments from me, David Neal.
Okay, thank you. Um, old business, we do have, um, a resolution that I'd like to read. June second, twenty twenty, and this is the, uh, bid award taller renovations for Drexel Hill Middle School and Stonehurst Hills Elementary School. Be it resolved that the Board of School Directors approves the awards for toilet room renovations at Drexel Hill Middle School and Stonehurst Hills Elementary School to the contractors listed below. All as part, as per their bids, open May twenty-six, twenty twenty, in each case being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. The quality of kind, quality and materials have been, having been considered. So the vendors, uh- So the vendors, uh, I'll just name them briefly, for Drexel Hill, SB Conrad, Goldhorn Electrical, and Myco Mechanic, and for Stonehurst, uh, it's the same, same items for both. So...
Second, this is Mrs. Mitchell.
Okay, so we have a second. Uh, all those in-
Did you, is President Brown, did you make a motion?
I'll make a motion, I'm sorry, thank you. I'll make a motion to approve this resolution. Mrs. Mitchell, was that a second to approve it?
Second, Mrs. Mitchell.
Okay. All those in favor-
Can we make, can we make comments?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Doctor, Mr. Fields, do you have a comment?
All right. Thank you, President Brown, sorry.
No, no problem.
Um, I, I, and hopefully I'm unmuted this time. Uh, I just want to let the, uh, uh, there's a savings of $300 in these costs, and I appreciate the efforts of the administration, again, Greg Hardicek. Uh, this is becoming a habit for me, uh, to do this every week, but I appreciate the efforts of, uh, uh, saving this district, uh, this community, um, these taxpayers some money, uh, by trimming the budget for this, um, uh, for, for these projects. Uh, some of these things, uh, some of these projects, the cost is the cost. Uh, and if you, if you, if, if, if you try to find something, even, let's just say for lack of a better term, even cheaper, uh, you have to question the quality, right? And so, it's, uh, you, you have to question the quality. And so I, I really, again, appreciate, um, the, the admin finding, uh, the savings here and, uh, trying, going out and trying to find the best bids that are out there. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Are there any other comments from the board?
Yes, just a point of clarity from, um, um, Mr. Fields, this is, um, Leah Dawes. Correction, it's $300,000 of savings. So I think he-
Three hundred thou-, three hundred thousand, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dawes. Are, are there any other comments from board members? Okay. Um, there was a, a motion, I made a motion, and Mrs. Mitchell seconded it, so all those in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose and state your name for the record. All those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain and state your name for the record. Motion carries, resolution carries. Is there any other old business from board members? Okay, hearing none. Is there any new business from school, from board members? Okay? Hearing none.
Go ahead, go ahead, Damian.
New business?
I have new business as well. Yeah, but I think Damian's going first.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, guys, this is, uh, this is Damian War Savage. I just wanted to share something that I came across on social media that I think would be a present message for specifically our kids to hear. And it was something that was actually created by our friends at Nickelodeon, and it's a declaration of kids' rights. Now, this is not any kind of formal legal anything, this is just a thing, a, something on social media that I wanted to share with everyone this evening. You have the right to be seen, heard, and respected as a citizen of the world. You have the right to a world that is peaceful. You have the right to be treated with equality, and I'll throw in there equity, regardless of the color of your skin. You have the right to be protected from harm, injustice, and hatred. You have the right to a 21st century public educational experience that prepares you to run this world. And finally, you have the right to your opinions and your feelings, even if others don't agree with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. War Savage. Mr. Fields?
Uh, thank you, uh, President Brown. Um, Damian, that, that was really nice. Um, I just wanted to mention that our youngest, uh, finished fifth grade at Aronomic last week, and I want to thank all the staff for what was a wonderful five years for our son, uh, despite a few absences. Um, sorry, Dan. In particular, I would like to thank, uh, the following teachers, uh, Mrs. Paris, uh, first grade, Mrs. Davenport, second grade, Mrs. Knapp, third grade, Mrs. Coyle, fourth grade, and Miss Polly, um, who dropped off Jacob's, uh, sign in your book last week. It was great to see her. Thank you, Miss Polly. Um, also, all the special teachers, and of course, a special shout out to, uh, Principal Josh Rehack, who took over Aronomic mid-year, uh, a few years ago. I, I also want to say, I know that Aronomic has a, a certain reputation, um, but from my family's perspective, uh, Aronomic's improvements, and has a reputation for, you know, has a certain reputation, but from my family's perspective, Aronomic's improvements have occurred over the last five years with a new principal and a newer staff. Our older son started at Aronomic but did not finish there. I am confident that the long overdue facilities improvements that we have planned for the school district will allow every family in every elementary school that we have to have the same positive experience that our family has had. These are our, this is my hope, but these are our plans, um, to deliver, as Damian said, a quality 21st century education, uh, to every family in this district, and I'm looking forward to that. Thanks again to the, the staff at Aronomic, uh, for taking care of, uh, our youngest, and, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Is there any other new business from board members?
President Brown?
Yes. Mrs. Curry?
I don't know, I don't know if this is new business, but I think this is the only time to make a, a comment at the end of the meeting. I just want to thank the, um, teachers, and particularly, um, Mrs., uh, Jill Morris, who is a senior counselor, um, for the senior class of 2020, um, for really helping see, um, my son through. And, uh, I just want to thank all the teachers and administrators for really making the class of 2020 feel special, um, as we are graduating, um, with a 2020 graduate, um, here in my household. And I just, I just really wanted to, um, show my, my gratitude to everyone who's made his experience what it has been at Upper Darby, and I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Curry. I, I would have to just piggyback on that and just echo, um, you know, under trying circumstances with this, uh, COVID-19, the seniors was really dealt a cruel blow, um, you know, to their senior year and, and midstream while they're in the middle of enjoying it. So I think overall, our district did an amazing job of making it the best it could possibly be and honoring them and doing them justice, and we're still in the middle of that, you know, with the graduation, virtual graduation coming up. So kudos to the entire district, Dr. McGary and his entire team, and all the administrators, and everybody. Thank you for your incredible work. Thank you for doing our seniors justice. We really, truly appreciate that. Is there any other new business from board members? Okay, hearing none. Uh, we are now at the time for public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby residents who, uh, who, who, uh, signed in to participate or, or emailed to participate on, using the parameters that Dr. McGary outlined several times, um, but we will adhere to the three minute time limit. Mrs. Buford, do we have public comments?
We do have public comments, Mr. Brown.
Okay.
The first comment is from Christina Heffernan at 907 Childs Avenue, Drexel Hill. The comment was received today at 6:23 p.m. by email. The comment reads as, as follows. What is the percentage of delinquent or outstanding Upper Darby School District property tax bills from 2019? Has any consideration been given regarding whether this number could drastically increase for 2020 and 2021 due to the economic turn down cau- downturn, excuse me, caused by the pandemic? Pennsylvania unemployment is currently over 15%, the highest in six years. If people are struggling to pay rent and mortgages, they will surely fall behind in taxes. What will happen with the school district's current budget if the recession or depression predicted by economists happens? Does the Pennsylvania state government bail out individual school districts and pay off their debt? End of comment.
Thank you. Dr. McGary, did you, anything to add or did you want to?
We could certainly provide answers to some of those questions during the next budget update. Uh, Mr. Rogers and I will certainly do so. Normally, a- as you know, these proceedings, comments are, are for the board meeting, and then we have discussion back and forth at the committee meeting, so we'll add those, um, and make sure we provide answers to those at our next update on the budget.
Okay, so you're just making note of the topics and we'll address them later. Thank you very much, sorry to interject.
No, it's okay.
Okay. Mrs. Buford, next comment?
The next comment is from Joe and Amy Sullivan, located at 5,000 Moravine Avenue in Drexel Hill. The comment was received today at 7:15 p.m. by email. The comment reads as follows. Once again, I plead with the school board to not go ahead with the Aronomic expansion. In current times of a recession and possible depression, unemployment, decreases in tax revenue due to COVID-19 and financial uncertainties, our school board and township does not need to borrow $38 million and raise taxes. We can wait until the school board finds a way to build a school in the 69th Street area where a school is so needed. Then it can be done in the right sequence and when the economy is doing better. End of comment.
Thank you. Next comment?
That concludes our comments that were received before 7:30 p.m. as per board policy.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Buford. Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved. Second, David Neal.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Meeting adj-
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, please stay safe, have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.